All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting now. If y'all will, by me.
Thank you. A word of prayer before we start. And Father Lord, thank you for giving us another opportunity to be here today. And thank you for giving us today that you never promised us, Lord. And thank you for the people in this right there. Their first will to serve this community and their second will to be a part of this community. So we'll all thank, ask you to bless America. And, uh, Lord, we know, we need you now most more than any, but we're gonna ask you to bring your blessings upon us. And, uh, thank you for everything you give us. The most of our thanks for sin Jesus to die on the cross for us. For giving us in many ways we failed you. For say Jesus name with praise. Amen.
All right. Got a personal appearance, first, Mark McFlint.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm, thank y'all for having me here tonight. Uh, I'll keep it brief. I'm here on behalf of the New Albany Next Commission. Uh, and we just have a resolution that should be in front of all of you. Uh, it's to adopt the Complete Streets Policy for the city of New Albany. Seems to be right in line with the comprehensive plan. Uh, essentially, the Complete Streets Policy is a movement across America last decade or so. And Hernando's adopted it at South Haven, Tupelo, Oxford, Meridian, Hattiesburg. And then, I think, every town in Arkansas and Alabama. What it does is it opens up a door for the city for additional grant funding to complete your streets, to complete your sidewalks, to make roads and sidewalks across the town accessible for all users. And by all users, I mean pedestrians, bicyclists, transit passengers, and vehicles. Designed to, in a way, implemented as most have been, to just make the city more accessible and travel more efficient. Um, there's no, you know, cost associated with this. It's not, it's not tying y'all down to anything in the future other than a consistent commitment to, to a complete, a complete city plan where everything flows and moves in an efficient cohesive manner. That's what I, about any questions?
Are you, are you saying any new streets or any, or all, in all streets? I guess is my question.
Yeah, so it, the idea is that the overall plan would be, yes, to eventually have where every, either every street, here's the, I guess, the clear answer.
Is that Kevin Bill?
Yeah.
About called.
You've got, you've got two phases or two options that people choose. They'll either overhaul every street and sidewalk, or, uh, in the, let's say, for example, uh, you want to start with implementing this plan between here in the park or here in, uh, you know, the ball field. Then you would complete the streets and the sidewalks necessary to, you know, move efficiently and make it available for all users on that path.
They don't.
So it doesn't have to be every street. That's obviously the goal. But where most have started out, and Hernando's a great example of this, are having a few thoroughfares where most of their folks are going anywhere, you know, or all of their travel or all of their extracurriculars or whatever it may be, from their town center to this, this place of activity. Making that accessible whether you're on a bike, whether you're on foot, whether you're in a car. Where everybody moves at the same ease as the, as another.
So by adopting this, we're making ourselves available to get grant dollars or just?
Yes. I mean, you're also ma, you're also committing to, uh, this plan that I just described, but that's also consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, that's been, you know, laid out and passed. And so, uh, the biggest benefit is the grant funding. I mean, that's the, that's the carrot.
Mr. Clinton, does the board have a written copy of the resolution you're proposing?
They do.
We do. So in other words, if we built a new sidewalk, we're committing to make that accessible sidewalk?
That's correct.
That's pretty much what.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. And this opens you up. If you, if you pass this policy and you've got this, you know, here minutes and this is, you know, part of your comprehensive plan, uh, then you've got the grant funding available, additional grant funding available. It would not otherwise be available to construct or repair or refurbish those sidewalks and roads.
So what are the negatives to doing this?
I, I don't know, I don't know any negatives. I mean, I'm not trying to hide the ball there. I, I just don't see any negative to it. And I have not heard any town that has passed it and then regretted it or a town that has been presented the option and chose not to opt into it or not to pass the policy. I don't really see where the negative would be unless we didn't want this to be the end result.
Well, the only thing I see is not having the property. Like, the first thing that pops in my mind is those real Cleveland. That needs widening. Moss Hill Drive needs sidewalks, but you want that is without the parlor right away, I guess.
Yep, and there's, and I can leave this for y'all, but there is, uh, I don't know what this individual's name is, but it's about a, it's 20 pages on how to, uh, how a city best implements this policy. And it goes through all the procedures from the basics of why you want it and what it does to how to acquire additional land. And then how to implement it and how the, you know, you know, if you got acquired right away or widening of the roads, private property, walks you through all of that. So it hasn't, it has, does not seem to have been an issue for Tupelo or Hernando, other than the two I checked with, so.
Well, the way I would understand is, we wouldn't, we don't, obviously, we don't have to make Moss Hill, expand Moss Hill, but if we were to do that, this would enable us to receive grant funding in order to expand something like Moss Hill.
That's right. That's exactly right. I mean, y'all could.
Cause you have a plan and a commitment in place that you're trying to do that. Obviously, we're not gonna do that overnight or commit to doing that overnight. But if we were to wanna do that one day, this would give us a better ability to do that.
Yeah, this would provide you with additional resources you will not otherwise have.
Can I just make one comment about that? All it is really is saying that as city leaders, you are committed to the walkability of your community. That any new constructions, like I just asked Bill, his new construction, that he had sidewalks to the front and he did. You're not held to anything. You're not, there's no money out, there's nothing. But you're just adopting this philosophy that you believe in walkability. You believe in safe sidewalks, you believe in crosswalks. It holds you, nothing, it's kinda like being a Tree City USA. You're just checking off these boxes and if you check them off, then you get, you are a complete street community and therefore it opens you up to funding and stuff. It's just a resolution.
But it does need, the policy does need to be, you know, incorporated as part of the comprehensive plan or the implementation of the comprehensive plan. It's, it's not full of teeth, but it's not without teeth either. I mean, it, you know, it's a resolution.
So if we build a new sidewalk, we need to build it right in accordance with what we say we're gonna do?
Yeah, that's right. Yep, and you've got yourself, and you've opened yourself up to the additional funding that may have been a roadblock or a barrier to completing that project in that way without it.
Issue, I see, it's, uh, it says if we overlay or any new road construction will be a four-foot wide paved shoulder on new construction, which wouldn't be that big of an issue, but a resurfacing, it says you'll add a four-foot paved shoulder on any resurfacing. That's a big added cost and a lot, like the mayor said, or we may not have right away there. We'd have to purge it right away and redo pitches and.
Well, as long as you're willing to, as long as you're willing to do the, the, I guess, the moderate lifting of securing the grant funding, it wouldn't come out of the city's pocket. Or it wouldn't cost you any more than it would otherwise. I mean, even if you're talking about matching funding, the partner matching probably what it would cost you if you didn't have to, um, do it this way. And then that's what, what this grant funding is attached to this for is you've got cities that have the same problem. Like, look, we can't do this cause it's too much money. And they're like, no, 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 we're gonna help you. We're gonna help you cover the additional costs.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Clinton, could you, we talked about grant money. Uh, can you give us an overview of, of what those sources would be for grant money? Who they, who they are and, and why they do this and what kind of, what kind of money they have?
Yeah, so it's coming from a variety of different sources. Uh, I'll give you one example that I've looked into and it's a Complete Streets, um, group that, uh, donates money for, provides grant funding for any city that makes their roads and sidewalks more accessible by bicycle. Uh, then you, you know, you've got a bunch of different options. I can give you a list if you want. But I, I'm not in the business of writing grants.
I don't know what the list of.
I, there's some board I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Mayor, do you know anything about this year?
Eric loves it. He was just telling me how much you like it.
No, I think it's. So, like, for example, it says, uh, resurfacing or reconstruction of roadway when roadway traffic is greater than 1,000 vehicles per day. Is anybody in the room, I mean, are all roads basically 1,000? I mean, like, is Moss Hill Drive, I imagine that's probably.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to refer to the old traffic, show you like a traffic study.
So in other words, if we repaid Moss Hill Drive, then that means we're committing to doing this, basically?
No, 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 hold on, no, 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 no.
That's, that was the interpretation that Will was concerned with. Or with the resurfacing or reconstruction of a roadway when roadway traffic is greater than 1,000.
Says a four-foot wide paved shoulder shall be included with construction or with resurfacing.
Well, I.
Is that or there, yeah?
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know what to tell y'all. I know what other cities have done. I know that it's been a good thing for them. Uh, if Moss Hill Drive stands in the way of a bunch of grant funding opening up, then I guess it is, just is what it is. Uh, I guess a counterargument to that is if Moss Hill is repaid, maybe it should be widened or a shoulder added.
Oh, I agree.
I don't think anybody's ever called Moss Hill Drive safe. So, I mean, this would give you the additional resources to do that.
Do you know anything about grants?
Yes, it's just, it's just, it's, it's, I mean, Moss Hill Drive, unless you wanna make it walkable from Moss Hill Drive to the city, then you, you would give it sidewalk. I can't see sidewalks being on Moss Hill Drive. I think it's just, if, if, I don't think, I know. If you wanna do biplanes and MDOT comes in and is doing the construction of it. If you're a complete streets, they will include the biplanes as they're doing the construction. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's not.
Well, they do it on any street. I, I mean, any street that's got 1,000 vehicles, I mean, MDOT with it.
Yes, if, if they're doing a project and, and we're a complete streets city, then they'll just go ahead and, MDOT or whoever's doing the project, they'll, they'll, that's not extra cost to that. I think you're kinda overthinking it, everything. It's just, it's, what like, it's like, if we gotta get recertified, once you're a complete street, it's not like you get recertified. You have to check the boxes off every year that you've done so much, but. It's in the comprehensive plan that we need to strive to be a complete streets city.
Yeah, I guess that's the other thing to add to this is it's, it's consistent with a commitment this board's already made. It's just giving y'all additional tools to do what you said you're gonna do.
So Bill, Jean, you said in the comprehensive plan, it says that we will do this?
One of the recommendations at the end says to start striving to be a complete streets community.
I make motion to table. This is the first I've seen.
I got most of the table for further discussion, I guess. And then further discussion. But I have a second.
We have to have a second to, to discuss it further? I mean, can we discuss it?
Yeah, this motion without that second. But he's motion to table until everybody can look at it, look.
So, can I ask him another question? More?
Till we get a second, not legally, but.
There's a motion, it's in B, all right.
There's motion on the table. To, uh, but after we, if we get a second, we'll discuss it. If not, we're gonna die for lack of a second. You have a second. Okay. Love to die for lack of a second. I'd ask you next question.
Mark, what is the, what's the timeframe on this? Are we in a hurry to do? Look, I support it, obviously, I would support this. My thing is, I'm really disappointed that it was laying on the desk when I got here and that's the first I heard of it. I, I mean, I just.
Did Joe not talk to you? About? Joe Davis? Did he not talk, he's on the commission with us and I thought he'd spoken to you about it.
No.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's my thing. I think it's a good thing. I know what you're talking about, what they've done in other cities.
Right.
But for me to sit here in 10 minutes.
No, I get that, I didn't know.
But is there a timeframe that this has to be accepted?
No.
Where it makes it a big?
Nah, there's not. I mean, other than, we just like to be moving forward, but there's no, there's no deadline on it, certainly not.
Uh, Mark talked to me about it a couple of months ago and I should've told you all about it, but I, I, I just thought you were, you may have told, I don't remember what our conversation was, but I know you talked to me about this.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I, I thought maybe you talked to them about it as well. Um, but I think it's, it's common sense that we need to support it. Um, I'm happy to, uh, discuss it further if we need to. Um, it doesn't, as far as I can see, legally commit us to anything other than what we should be doing, which is to, when we build new things, make it accessible. So, um, uh, I, if we, uh, what, what are the things, Will, that we would need to discuss if we're gonna table it? Like, what are the things that you're concerned with?
I just would like to read it. I just, you just got it.
Okay.
First time I'm looking at it.
Joe, did anybody talk to you about this?
Not that I can recall.
I got a quick question.
Not, not, I mean, not, not this.
Did Moses not talk to you about this?
Okay. I have a quick question. I, I hadn't read that, not only you have a copy of it, but if we were to just tweak a few words here and there, take out the word shall, that we will, which makes it sound like we're committed to doing something on each street, uh, and put it in more aspirational terms, we want to do that, but of course, we'll have to look at the feasibility. Is that still acceptable for them? Are we allowed to make changes?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Is this, so is this, uh, is this a resolution that, that y'all adopted? Or is this something that Complete Streets? What is Complete Streets? What is?
Yeah, so it's calling, it's a movement. I mean, it's a complete streets movement. It's a loosely affiliated organization of people with different apparatuses that provide grant funding and assistance in, in the passage of, of these type of resolutions and policies. So this is actually a, we used a form, uh, that had been provided to Hernando. And so we used, this is worded exactly like Hernando's is worded.
Okay.
And Tupelo's. Oxford's is, Oxford's is like five pages long.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Well, uh, I get, yeah, I guess it's, the concern is this is the first time people have seen it. They wanna take some time, probably.
Yeah, and I understand that.
If we're going to, uh, table it, let's just, I mean, we just need to make a commitment to when we're gonna make a decision on it and not table it forever, you know? That would be my thing, just next one.
We need a motion.
Yeah.
Why you just bring it back on agenda? We have to have a vote to do that, so we bring, bring it back, yeah.
Let's do that one.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I completely understand that. I did not, I thought someone had talked to you and rigged you on it. I thought somebody had talked to you and rigged you on it, so I, I apologize for that.
Well, I wanna read it and understand it, but I, to be honest with you, I think I understand it, but I'm not 100% sure and I will support it, it's just.
I appreciate that. No, honestly, I'd have been worried if y'all, without reading it and they're thinking about it.
I don't think, by me, it says, it does say resurfacing. Is that overlay, I mean, we overlay streets. I know all of them don't have 1,000 gigs, but I'll say Moss Hill's close.
Oh, yeah, that one definitely.
And it needs somewhere to walk, cause they ride bikes and walk on it all the time, yeah.
Well, I also, I'd hate to, you know, with the best intentions, make a mistake and not do it on the road that we say we're going to do it on and it costs us to grant money down the road.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, I think that is something that y'all should discuss and think about. If you sign up for this and you've got anybody, you know, willing to give you grant money, whether it's matching or just straight grant money, you don't have to pay back or match. Uh, you know, for Complete Streets and you do it here, but you don't do it there and you, you know, then, then, yeah, you probably go get it yanked or be asked to pay some back. So if, you know, if you sign up for free money, you gotta do what they, you know, what they want you to do.
And I think probably like, whoop, absolutely not.
Sure, right, I completely get that. Look, look, all of y'all have my, my number and my email, so if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions, concerns. If you wanna, we're gonna walk through the particulars, we can do that. Um, but I just appreciate y'all's time. You know, I've gotta get to Ercrue, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mark.
Okay, next on the personal appearances is Park Beverage, Buddy Skelton, Wayne Witt.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and all of us. Appreciate your time today. My name's Wayne Witt. I'm the general manager of, uh, Park Beverage Group for the New Albany branch. We have about 10 to 15 branches in Kentucky, of course, in Mississippi. And, uh, this is my coworker, Buddy Skelton, he's the area manager over the New Albany area. Uh, we wanna thank you guys on behalf of Park Beverage Group for what you guys do for the community here in New Albany. And, uh, we've got you guys some drinks. We've got a case of drinks mixed up for you guys. And I have a list of names, who they're for. Buddy, research that and give it to us.
Yeah, Will, help you with it.
Uh, thank you, Will, I appreciate that. And, uh, we've got y'all drinks and a case of water for Christmas. And thank you guys for all of what you did. I really do appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Enter downstairs.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to departmental bills. So, I don't want a approved pay request number 12 from Roberts Construction for the new municipal building, about $278,000, $163.37.
We gonna do them all later?
I'll let you do them all. Yeah, that's your.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna combine those.
I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give what it to, I don't like to have the first one.
The second one is a pay request for KJAC Construction for the Carter Avenue lift station. In amount of $79,615.94. We just put those two together.
Okay. I'd have a motion for those first two. Motion by Keith, second, second by Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most curious?
I've got a couple of change orders on the municipal building, items three and four. Uh, the first was change order number six, sending out a $9,024 to, uh, that's gonna be to, to Roberts Construction. And that's to, uh, for the addition of surveillance monitoring. So, keep, again, I think it's just to get wired and conduit and everything in place for the surveillance equipment that you wanna have. That's change order number six. Change order number seven, it's for the exterior concrete, uh, the, the drive-through and the work we're doing on the front parking lot, in amount of $133,000.
You gonna do them two together?
Yeah, we can get both of those approved.
Okay. Something, got most of my well, I have a second. Same with Drew. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious?
Item number five there is a change order on the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, given, you know, we've said it's using plants since May, we're just waiting on final acceptance. There's a few cleanup things that KJAC took, they're the primary contractor that finished up. And during the course of the project, there's been five or six different things we've had to do out there that have created, you know, just some kinda cleanup change orders. This is within the contingency budget of the project and there's money there to pay for. With this change order number two, in amount of $42,500, we'll get all of our little additions we've had along the way cleaned up.
All right, I have a motion by Drew, I have a second. Same with my Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious?
Mayor, item number six is, uh, integrated communication. That's to relocate the radio equipment, uh, for the, uh, for the police radio. I think that's some of our light gas and water equipment as well, is to move the, uh, move the console to the new PD dispatch area. Sending out a $26,000. Uh, again, we, we did get that bid. Uh, we had a competing deal that was ASI and this was a low bid for the work.
All right, Will, most, yeah, most of my Kevin Dale, I have a second.
Same.
Same with Will. Any other trip, uh, discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious?
Item number seven, uh, we learned our new substation over Highway 348, Northeast New Albany Substation. We are ready to advertise for material for that. And I think we have a list of that somewhere, so. Uh, circuit breakers and relay panels that we're gonna be advertising for. Just want permission to advertise for that material.
Okay. Some of them with my Will, but I have a second. Same with Parks. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious?
Mayor, we also hope in the next month to be able to start advertising for material for our, for our electric system communication project, that would be to build a fiber network around our electric system. Well, Kim, we've got the conceptual design that we think will be completed two or three weeks and we'll, we'll get a preliminary list of material. We'd like permission to advertise that material, we have the list.
Okay, let's will the board here. Some, most of my Will, same with my Drew. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious?
Mayor, Marshall County, the Department of Transportation is getting ready to do a bridge replacement job up there. And, uh, one of our gas things is parallels that run. We're gonna need to relocate the gas thing. MDOT will pay for that relocation. We've already got a design approved with them and they're ready for us to advertise the project. We call, it's a keyless authority to do that and we'll advertise for a contractor.
Got most of my Keith, I have a second. Parks. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any most curious?
Mayor, the next item is update on some of our emergency repairs that we've had. Uh, we spoke about the Apple Street well at the last meeting. That work is ongoing and hopefully will be done this week. So at the next meeting, I'll, I'll have an update for that. Uh, there are some other updates we've had in the last few months that I do need to kinda close and look with on the board. I've actually got five different invoices. I'm gonna, I'll read off and tell me the dollar amount, just frankly, I'll give you all the information you need. But I did, I just need to get these ready to the minutes. Yeah, we, we had approval on file repair. Uh, Donald Smith Company is for emergency repair on the Butler Street well, in amount of $19,100. Another Donald Smith for the Sports Flex well with a motor burn out there for $11,130. Donald Smith for a repair at the well here behind our, our office, in amount of $6,627. Lucky Pump also had worked on that repair behind our office, in amount of $5,990. And then Paul's 50 Construction, when we had the leak, uh, the, the leak down here at Highway 30 and Bankhead Street, we had to get their equipment in to fix that leak, in amount of $5,132.
Okay, let's with, uh, most of my Drew, I have a second.
Mayor.
Same with Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious?
Uh, Mayor, the last item is new hire requests. Uh, we'd like to hire Rodney Callcar for the electric department on the right of way crew.
Okay. Most of my Kevin Dale, I have a second.
Same.
Second by Will. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And most curious?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is community development, Bill Jean here.
I, uh, sent the reports out, uh, earlier today. I did wanna say that we had the best Christmas parade I think we've had in a long time.
Yeah, I agree.
And I wanted to tell Johnny Tait, and I've never had so many phone calls and texts and comments that you were the perfect grand marshal, so I just want you to know, people appreciate what you do.
They need to start signing autographs.
I know, but you might have a good street named after.
Correct, you can come out and sing, mother shit. He's five, he's five.
I got, I got zero total score points.
All right, Police Department.
I don't really have anything, not just my other van. It was a kind of, I guess, my fault on the last time. I guess this was back about three or four months ago. We got all the vehicles, the excess vehicles. We had both seizures and police vehicles were to take out a fleet well, and the, what happened was, we actually swapped, there was an airport vehicle. It was one of the city-owned vehicles. It kind of got swapped for another vehicle, and it kind of got left in the mix. So, I'm saying, again, for permission to sell a 2006 Ford Crown Victoria, it's been down on the lot for the last, it should have actually done this two months ago, but I just now got a call up. And I've asked the board or the mayor, is there any other vehicles? There may be one that's come up. There's any other vehicles that you want to be doing?
I would think, uh, the mayor's, uh, it's back here.
Yeah, it's, while I'm doing this, my plan, my plan is tomorrow, you know, Miss Frankie, we, we started now, she said, Reagan, do you remember what the legal date is? I, we have to run this legally. Is it 15 days? Or longer?
What do you want to do?
Basically, put, put these vehicles up for auction. Like, we did the last time.
These are abandoned vehicles?
No, these are city-owned vehicles.
Oh. I don't remember it. They're not even existing. I just think you have to, uh, run it in a.
I, 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 I thought it was leased for 15 days. It could be mistaken.
It's been a while since I looked at them, so I.
So, I, we'll get together tomorrow. So, my plan is tomorrow to start it. Yeah, I'll get with Reagan to, to make sure we have the right amount of dates, start publicizing it, put it on Facebook video. Uh, Bill Jean and Tracy Phil helped me with that, kind of sort of, put it back out on social media for visiting.
Yeah, it is a number of days, yeah.
And have good, some of the last time disposal of both the 2006 Crown Vic, Ford Crown Victoria, and the.
2005, I believe, Tows.
Okay. That's what, and I'd be glad to do the two on there.
Thank you. We need, uh, most of my, most of my Drew to have a second. Same with my Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And most curious?
Thank you, sir.
My next year.
Park and Rich, Aces, you got any?
I don't have anything.
I saw them doing some construction on the splash pad.
They are. Uh, Reagan's kind of holding them up, but they're looking to be done. They're going, looking for concrete middle of next week.
Maybe we'll put Reagan for this. Okay, Street Department. Johnny, you got anything?
I don't.
All right. Middle Inspector Eric.
I can mail my monthly report. Uh, this is on, designing meeting. We had a request from Wild and Free Behavior, all of 300 Drive, for a conditional permitted mixed use. It was approved. We had a request from Tanglefoot Properties at 803, I mean, 801, Highway 30 East, for a conditional permitted use for our event center. It was approved. A request from TRY Properties to rezone about 105 acres off of Park Plaza, drive from SNA, MR, AG, and SC to TND-10, and it was approved. The zoning and permit fee adjustments, they approved it also. And that's all meeting, but I need to set a public hearing for the January 3rd, is that right? Uh, meeting for the rezoning of the TRY properties off of Park Plaza.
All right. Most Keith, same with my Drew. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And most curious? Set a public hearing for the Jan Woodard. It'll be a new year, won't it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, there's nothing on the updated agenda. Cause any agenda, agenda, unless somebody's got a question on there. We'll pay. So, we'll move to the action agenda. Uh, anybody got storm shield to discuss and update? Okay. Municipal Court Judge, approve temp, judge appointments. Clean, you got a recommendation on judge?
It's not for me to recommend, uh, I mean, whenever I.
Matt Harris is our program, so.
Recommend him.
Don't go out.
Matt Harris. All right, we got a motion to, to move Matt Harris to judge. Go have a second. Same with my Parks. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aha. Any opposed? And most curious? Now, we got to set the pro temp judge. He's assistant judge. And, uh, Reagan says he has time to do that. Am I right, Reagan? The pro temp?
I want him to do it.
Yeah.
Probably three or four people would.
If, uh, if they didn't let y'all got any other grants, I see you get.
Yes, please.
Approved, okay. All right, now, most of my Drew, I have a second.
Same.
Same with my Will. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And most curious? Okay, let's move to the Almsey. It's approved letter to excuse services of Jackson and Creighton for management discussion and analysis, of course, in the audit. Their audit's going on right now. And I think what they do, uh, you know exactly what they do, Frank?
I sent him his copy of the letter.
Okay. Yeah, they kind of check, like, in spots, yeah. But I need a motion to approve that, though.
Make a motion.
All right. Parks, we have a second, Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That'll be a ceasefire franchise agreement. And I don't know a lot about it.
Well, it's forward, it's, I think, Bill and y'all maybe made some changes to it. We got the first.
They're gonna bower, and we got some board notices that we need to look at before we approve this agreement. The way I'm understanding it, that's right, Bill or Eric?
Reagan wants to.
There were some legal issues that, uh, I think, calling, talking to everybody, maybe we should just talk about it before we, before.
We need to move the table, or are you with this one?
No, we, 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 we can always come out and deal with it after. But, okay. We need to save it.
Okay. Out of me is approved request for cash of a $111,231.45 on the Moss Hill Drive project. It's a CDBG project, and it goes with Project Rock. And, uh, that's their pay request for cash number three.
Second, do you?
Yeah, let's do both of them. Out of me, I have to get permission to ask a little money for, from MDA or CBG for the same amount. To him and him actually, later.
Something.
I got most of my will, I have a second. Same with my Parks. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, out of G's, consider executive session. For what?
Legal.
Legal, eh?
Yes.
All right. I got a motion by Kevin Dale, who's being, I have a second, uh, second.
Same.
Same with my Will. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, any opposed? Okay.